Capron.
Here.
Greckin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Redding.
Here.
Scott.
Here. Can we stand for a silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Mary, you want to meet me at the podium and get your camera ready, would you please?
Yeah, well, yeah.
You want to do this first? Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, we have a proclamation that reads: Whereas for the 25 years, the Sulan Community Health Center has provided high-quality, affordable health care in our community, demonstrating that locally governed health care can improve the lives without lowering costs. And whereas what began as a small demonstration project in two states 50 years ago has formed the country's largest primary care network, with health centers now serving as health care home for over 24 million Americans through more than 9,000 delivery sites across the nation. And whereas the Sulan Community Health provides high-quality, cost-effective, and accessible primary and preventive care, including integrated medical, dental, prenatal care, behavioral health, and pharmacy service to all individuals regardless of insurance status or ability to pay. And whereas the Sulan Community Health Center is critical economic engine, powered locally counted by generating millions of dollars in combined economic impact to job creation. Health centers save the entire health system approximately $24 billion annually by managing chronic conditions and keeping patients out of the costlier health care settings like hospital emergency rooms. And whereas National Health Center Week and the 25th anniversary of the Sulan Community Health Center offers the opportunity to recognize America's health cares, their dedicated staff, board members, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sault Ste. D'Artre, on behalf of the City Council, will hereby proclaim August 7 through the 13th, 2016, this National Health Care Center Week, and extend our appreciation to the Sulan Community Health for its 25 years of dedicated service to the people of Sault Ste. I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you very much.
Fourth is a resolution authorizing final payment to Grunman Hicks for the Zenith wastewater treatment contact basin improvements project. Five are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution accepting the transit joint participation agreement with IDOT for a state transit assistance, STA, grant for public transit services. B is a resolution approving a contract, Lazard contract, for the Cone Park Design Project. I need to abstain on that. C is a resolution authorizing an agreement with IDOT in connection with the rehabilitation of the Bluff Street Bridge over the Old Floyd Channel. D is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to JARCO Builders to perform wall repair, painting, and installation of ceiling suspension systems in the Skywalk near Fifth Street to Fourth Street Bridge going to Central Bank. E is a resolution approving a drug and alcohol testing program service agreement with Unity Point Health, St. Luke's Occupational Health. F is a resolution approving-
Mayor and Council, we would ask for an amendment to this proposed agreement. We would like to add an additional confidentiality provision to the agreement, but would ask that the agreement be approved subject to us adding that provision in.
I'll move that.
Thank you.
Second. Follow the rule, please.
Greckin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Redding.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
F is a resolution approving the contract to Barclay Asphalt for the North Ramp Pavement Rehabilitation Project at the Sioux Gateway Airport. Six are motions making appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. A is a motion appointing Todd Moyer to the Events Facility Advisory Board. B is a motion appointing Alex Waters to the Events Facility Advisory Board. Seven are total checks, approved total checks issued for the reporting period of July 2016 in the amount of $7,391,071.08. Eight are applications for beer or liquor licenses. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Nine are receipt of minutes. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items, please come forward.
I have to say, I almost had a question on the museum minutes when it said Steve Hansen hired Steve Hansen as the new part-time laborer, but yeah, it is spelled differently on the last name.
Passes five zero. Ten is an ordinance dedicating that portion of South York Street lying south of 4520 South York Street. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move first reading.
Second.
Passes five zero. Anybody opposed to waiving-
Moore.
Aye.
Redding.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Greckin.
Aye.
I'll move second, third.
Second. Simultaneous seconding today.
Passes five zero. Eleven is a hearing and ordinance vacating Metropolitan Street adjacent to 1121 and 1125 River Drive. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it.
Second.
Passes five zero. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move it.
Second.
Redding.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Greckin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
I'll move second, third.
Second.
Passes five zero. Twelve is motion approving athletic facility improvement request for FY17 capital improvement funding. I'll move it.
Second.
I did have a question, you know, first off, I don't know what is Tris- Do you have a question? You know, first off, I don't know what is Tristate Revolution?
I didn't know that either.
Matt Salvatore Parks, our recreation director, they are the soccer club that operates Ruger Field.
And then Sulan Soccer, is that for Riverside?
Yep.
Is this just going to be turned around and be part of that donation towards the soccer field, or?
It's pretty open-ended on what the money can be used for, either equipment or some type of bricks and mortar project. Most of them use it for equipment. So they don't actually get the money. We don't just give them three thousand dollars. They have to submit proof of payment, like receipts essentially.
Yep.
Okay.
What's happening up at Hubbard Park?
The facility's still being utilized. It's more of a rental facility, and they're still maintaining it, taking care of it.
So, three thousand dollars will...
They typically don't utilize that money.
Ah, so where does it go, then?
It just stays in the fund.
Okay. Do they know they could if they needed to?
Yes. We've explained to everybody. We email them on a regular basis. We'll email them after this is approved and tell them that it's available, so they can submit us their receipts.
Does everybody else use their money out?
Most of them do. Not all the complete balance, but we just leave it in the fund.
So, when you leave it in the fund, does it just carry over to the next year and then?
Either that, or we're responsible for repairs over a thousand dollars. So if we have some of those come up, this is the fund that we use it to pay for those things.
Okay, good.
So what about like the concession stands that are no longer used and pretty bad disrepair? I mean, are we going to just... Some of those we should probably tear down as a safety...
Yeah, I actually am on the city roofs project. I'm working with stands, stand on fixing all the roofs and evaluating all the buildings. So that'll be part of the city roof CIP in that this...
Well, some of those roof replacements will probably cost like what the, more than what the building ever cost to build.
Yeah, we have a five-year plan for that, so we'll evaluate whether it's even worth the money.
Thanks, Matt.
Good, thanks.
Passes five zero. Thirteen's a resolution approving a master agreement for professional service with Bartlett West for the Sioux City Wastewater Treatment Facility Resource Recovery and Beneficial Refuge Project.
Or Task Six, that is optional.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mark Sims, utilities director. Task Six is not considered critical, but still very valuable to us in that it evaluates the high-strength waste piece of this, and high-strength waste can contribute to the gas production that we're looking for about that, or any of the other tasks.
What do we think the overall timetable is to?
We are looking at completion, I believe it's in mid or late January, January twenty-fifth of seventeen. Several meetings in between then. This also does help us further down the path toward the plant re-rate. I won't say that we can guarantee that will happen, but it does give us some more technical information that will help with the NHR in that regard.
So does the scope of work include engineering and design, or just?
No, it does not. Would you guys like to?
Speedability study.
Yep. There's a point this is study. They will determine whether we legitimately have the ability to reuse this gas injected in the pipeline, or reuse it in some way and capture revenue from it.
Okay.
It's amazing we give engineers longer to design something than we do contractors to build it. I said it's amazing. Sometimes we give engineers longer times to evaluate than we do contractors to build, but what do I know about anything, so. That's five zero. Fourteen's resolution awarding Knight River Midwest for the two thousand sixteen annual resurfacing project. I'll move that.
Second.
I have a question on that. The hearing was held the twenty-fifth of July, and then it says construction completion shall be done within fifty working days. When is the fifty working days? Like, right?
Well, now, as city engineer, that should take us into the end of October.
Okay.
Fifty working days.
So they're going to start on it now, and then that's their working fifty?
They're not going to start on that until you get the contract in two weeks.
Correct. Yeah, it'll come back. I think we have actually, next week, we're going to come back for the approve.
Okay. Then it's fifty days after that, and it should be done.
Fifty working days, so that's about...
What's working days? Like Monday through Friday?
Business days.
Is that a working day? I can work seven days.
Unless there's a weather day that doesn't count. So that's where we don't get into, you know, complete by October thirty-first, we'll do a working day contract instead. So then we're not negotiating damages on what's a day.
No, you still are going to negotiate what a day is, because when a contractor gets rain and it washes him out, they're going to give him a day. But they lost all the work they did, so they got to go back to where they were. And it may not dry for a day or two, but they're going to, they're going to count that as a, well, that's how you've done in the past now.
They have to be able to work on the controlling item to get charged a working day.
I understand that, but it's still not going to, it's not ironclad. There won't be arguments about what damages are, because you may say they can work, and they may say it's too wet to work.
And each week, they'll be provided a working day report that says what, whether they were charged a working day or not, and they have ten days to dispute that working day report.
Well, I think the system's much better, but I'm just saying. It doesn't mean that you're not going to have a disagreement on whether they're...
But also by our Sioux City spec, they're required to pump the site dry within twenty-four hours of a rainstorm. So...
They don't always dry, depending on where you're at in two days. And then you get a rain on top of that. I'm just saying, it's not...
But it won't be, but you can't sit there and say it'll be fifty that, is it fifty five?
No, it's fifty.
Fifty working days is ten weeks. It won't necessarily translate to that. But there are also, contractors can work on Saturdays where they don't get charged a working day. That's a free day for them to work without getting charged a working day also.
That was kind of my question, because there are Saturdays and Sundays in every week.
Yeah, well, Sunday they get charged for a working day, because that's considered like a holiday. If they try to work on a holiday or a Sunday, they get charged a working day. But if it's a holiday, they don't get charged. If it's a Saturday, they can work and not get charged. So they actually can pick up a day every week if they'd like.
Okay. Thank you.
Passes five zero. Did you happen to ask why there was only one bidder? Did you ask anybody else why they didn't bid? Is it because of fifty working days?
Scheduled through the rest of the year.
I understand that LaMars had an asphalt project they didn't get a single bid on.
Right.
You had one last week because of a short completion date at the Dyson. Not one bid.
I don't think it was that.
You guys on our engineering committee need to start looking about putting this work, bidding it now, and letting them finish it in the spring, because otherwise, every sewer guy's loaded up, I think you'd agree. They're pretty much all loaded right now.
But Bob, I think some of that had to do with the stairs, because they didn't have all the information.
Yeah, there was some other issues, including that they changed what they wanted to do on the stairs and put out a very late addendum that completely changed how the stairs were going to be handled.
And nobody could get it done in this year yet.
Oh, yeah. I mean, the completion date was part of it, but there was also issues with the addendum and how they wanted to handle the stairs.
Yeah.
The guys couldn't get quotes from, because it was more going to be specialty work than what they were.
What we should have done is just got two different bids.
And they are going to do that. They're going to divide the contract out into the flat work and what needs to get done to handle the tripping hazards and handle the stairs separately.
Wasn't there an alternate bid, wasn't there, for the stairs completely?
Well...
Wasn't there an alternate bid for the stairs?
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't alternate, but the people couldn't get prices on it was one of the issues. But they were also concerned about the completion date.
Cool.
Just saying, we need to start looking at that and extending it, even if you have to, a critical job you have to have done this year, maybe, but the rest of it, if it saves us money.
Yeah.
All right, citizen concerns. Please come forward, state your name and address, so it can be recorded.
My name is Marion Deon. I live here in Sioux City. I'm here to speak about a dangerous structure. I have a neighbor, two fourteen Paxton, whose roof is completely rotted, has caved in, and the city inspector allowed them to recover rotted joists, rotted sheathing, two-foot holes in the roof. And I don't understand why. There is one eighty-six-year-old woman living in this house in a wheelchair alone. This house has basement structure failing. It has roof structure failing. And I would like to see this fixed, fixed according to code, which it definitely was not this time. I brought a packet I'd like to leave with you of eight by ten photographs, about ten of them with the explanations of the codes that apply, and the pictures that were taken of the structure when it was uncovered. And the structure was not inspected by a city inspector until after they had put sheathing over the rotted joist. And the joist and the sheathing that they took out, or the sheathing that they took out was so rotten, they removed it by hand with no tools. It looked like wet cardboard.
Okay. Let us look at it, and we'll have the city manager look into it. Go ahead and give it to him, if you would. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Rick Mullin, thirty-seven fifteen Cheyenne Boulevard, and I'm here to talk about the Sulan Film Festival, and hopefully a partnership that we can form with the City of Sioux City. I do have some copies of a presentation. If you'd like, I can drop them off here. About a dozen years ago, some of us came together to form the Sulan Institute of Film to try to bring a film festival to Sioux City, because back then, the only movies that played in town were things that had car chases and explosions. We had started out with people sending in VHS tapes, and we picked the best ones, and they showed up at the Orpheum one night. Now we're in our, going to be in our thirteenth year, and we are trying to dramatically expand and enhance the festival from the current four nights last year to five days and five nights, using the Stony Creek as our hotel, host hotel. We're also changing the name of the festival to the Sioux City International Film Festival, because of the focus on downtown Sioux City and what we think this could bring. We will have over a hundred short films, many of which will play during the daytime at Stony Creek, because we know a lot of folks don't like to go out at night in the winter, and this would be in the dead of February, by the way. We will also have a musician from New Hampshire who is an expert at playing organs to silent films. So we're going to be doing very family-friendly short comedies and adventure films during the daytime. And in the evening, we're going to have a feature-length film, such as Phantom of the Opera or something like that, with the accompaniment of this expert accompaniment. Many other cities, most cities, in fact, our size, have film festivals, and they're marquee events for their cities. We think that our festival has the ability to grow and create something unique in the heart of Sioux City in the dead of winter. As I said, we're going to be using the Stony Creek Hotel. For example, I was at, some of us went to the Dubuque Film Festival this year, and they very successfully utilized a host hotel, and it became quite an amazing thing. The interaction of filmmakers, people in the community, educators, and I think that makes it an interesting thing for us as well, because we also have access to the facilities there. We're going to be bringing in folks to do workshops and seminars during the day aimed at college and high school students. We think it's a good tie-in with STEM program and the initiatives that the Sioux City schools are doing and that the local colleges are doing. But in order for this to come together, we need partnerships with a number of businesses and with the City of Sioux City, quite frankly. The increased costs that we know are going to happen this year have to come from somewhere. So what we're truly looking for is a real partnership with the City of Sioux City. I served eight years on the old Convention Center Auditorium Tourism Board. I know how important it is to bring events to Sioux City, both to bring additional folks here, but also as a quality-of-life thing for the city. It is going to cost a little bit of money, and that's why we are asking the council for twenty-five thousand dollars toward putting on the festival. Now, I don't know that we're going to need the entire sum of that this year, but it would, whatever would not be used this year would be used with the other sponsorship monies and go towards the following year's festival. So with your additional support, we think we can make the Sioux City International Film Festival an amazing thing and a great destination for downtown Sioux City in the middle of February.
Where do they come from? All over the country, the...
We have, well, films from all over the country, of course, right in Sioux City. You know, kids in Morningside producing stuff, semi-professionals, college students from all over the country, but literally all over the world. We've had films from, many from Australia, been very popular, Vietnam, France, Germany. In fact, a couple of years ago, we had two French filmmakers fly from Paris to Sioux City for the world premiere of their film, which we showed at the Art Center. They were absolutely thrilled, and we still stay in contact with them through Facebook. They sing the praises of Sioux City, believe me, and they say it's their favorite festival they've ever been to, and they've been to quite a few. So yes, from all over the country, all over the world. And by the way, all these films are thirty minutes or less. They're not super highbrow. Some of them are quite hilarious. One of the features this year is going to be the five minutes or less, or the short shorts, which I think could be a little bit exhausting after a while. So I think we're going to have a couple of intermissions during that one. But that'll be real short, fun films, and I think it'd be very popular. We hope to also bring in a band. The biggest night we had last year was horror films, much to my surprise. And we think that Friday night of horror films would also be a great night to bring a band into the Stony Creek and have a good time that night as well.
I love the idea. I think that this would be another jewel of Sioux City, you know? I think it would grow. That's what interests me, especially, you know, there are people coming from all over the world. How can you get Sioux City's name out? This is how you can do it.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm all on board for helping out, and I would even be involved, so...
Oh, it'd be great.
Yeah, so I think it's great. We'll have to think about the twenty-five thousand. I'm sure that that's, we'll have to sit down and talk about that, but I'm sure that we would be very interested in giving money, so. And what's your thoughts, sir, Mr. Padmore?
It'd be a council decision. Right now, it's unbudgeted, but we've had other requests that we've considered.
Okay. How do you guys feel?
Exciting project, and the city would then be the sponsor?
A sponsor. I'm not sure if they'd be presenting, it'd be a very big sponsor, believe me.
The number would be just in of attendance?
Oh, our attendance is very substantially, depending on the year. We've had as many as eleven hundred and as few as four or five hundred when the weather was really bad. That's one of the great joys of trying to program something in February in Sioux City. But we know, for instance, example, the Dubuque Film Festival, Dubuque is very similar demographically to Sioux City. They get four thousand people at their festival. And I'm not suggesting we're going to have four thousand people as soon as we change the festival and enhance it, but I do believe there's an awful lot of room to grow, and we will see continued growth and expansion and more participation. That really is a personal goal of mine, is trying to get more young people here to use their cameras and their computers and put together interesting storylines and putting it together in a visual format that people would enjoy and understand.
So my question, Rick, is February is kind of a tough month. We never know what we're going to get. Does it have to be in February? Can it be?
Well, it doesn't have to be. We've found the last few years, we've tried to have it the same week as the Oscars, and that's what happened next year as well. Our festival would be Sunday and then, for the sign of films, and then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday would be our festival, and then Sunday would be the Oscars. So there's already a buzz going on.
Oh, sure.
The other thing we discovered is that since we're relatively early in the festival circuit, we get a lot of world premieres. People choose our festival because it's the first chance they have to put their film out there. So, you know, I think we had, what, six or seven world premieres last year and several the year before. It's a lot of fun.
So people come to, I mean, not just ordinary people, but people come to buy these films? Is that what they do?
Well, it's mostly just to enjoy the experience of seeing the film in an audience, especially when you get to something like the Orpheum. When we show the filmmakers the Orpheum Theater, and they're going to see their film on the big screen, that just, the biggest thing they've ever seen. They're just, they can't believe it. So most fundamentally, it's people coming to town for this event, having a great time. having a great time, and hopefully interacting with the filmmakers and Sioux Cityans.
Rick, I think the exposure to Sioux City would be great, and I certainly noticed that it's gone from Suland to Sioux City International Film Festival, which is good, and I think it has the potential to have tremendous economic impact, and I can see it growing. I will say that this is a little bit more than the discussion we had the other day, I think in terms of financial support from the city. And the city does support other events, none to that amount, I believe, so. Is there, you mentioned possibly that there could be money left over, is there, do you already have a preliminary financial statement, something that we can work off of that would maybe help us to?
We do have preliminary numbers put together, and one of the things about that is we tried very carefully to make sure we could ramp it up or down, depending on what our funding sources are.
Exactly.
Because we never really know. We go out and try to talk to businesses and individuals to sponsor, you know, give us, you know, five thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars, we don't really know. So the fact is, one of the reasons people, filmmakers, submit to a festival is the size of the prizes that you get for the best film in each category. And again, Dubuque, I think, had over forty or fifty thousand dollars in prizes. We're not talking forty or fifty, we're talking maybe four or five thousand dollars in prizes here. But if, with enough sponsorship, we could certainly make the prizes bigger, which would tend to attract bigger films and bigger filmmakers. You know, heck.
Certainly.
I even saw Gary Busey in Dubuque. Can you believe it? Gary Busey.
Was he in a horror movie?
He was in a movie, I don't know, I wouldn't say the quality.
What's your, what's your projected revenue?
Most of the revenue that we get comes from sponsorships.
I understand. How many dollars are you looking at?
Overall, the minimum we think that we need for this year is about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars.
But you're asking us for twenty?
Somewhere between thirty and forty thousand dollars that we believe would be appropriate to enhance and increase this festival.
So you're talking a top-end forty thousand dollar budget, and you want the city to throw twenty-five into it?
I'm asking.
I hate to sound like a bad guy as a film major, but, you know, there's kind of a formula for how many people it attracts, you know, as to what kind of revenue you expect. I mean, you're going to see probably sales tax revenue of about six hundred to twelve hundred dollars from this many people, so. I mean, as a twenty-five thousand dollar donation to get six hundred to twelve hundred in revenue, you know, obviously, it's not an investment for the taxpayer, it's more creating an amenity at that point.
It is that, and it's also creating that longer-term thing that I'm, I think, more concerned about. Having this newer structure, allowing us to promote it differently and offer many more things to the community.
Well, and like I said the other day, you know, Downtown Partners would be a source of revenue for something like this being in the downtown area. And, you know, I know for similar things, about nine hundred dollars would be something that you would expect from them, and I don't know if you have any disagreement with that, Dan, as far as going to Downtown Partners, but I think that would be a legitimate source of small amount. I mean, for me, you know, financial-wise, and I haven't seen your guys' numbers and, you know, what we've done recently, I mean, I'm seeing it more as like maybe a five thousand dollar type, you know, and I don't know where our numbers would be if we had a report from Donna as far as events that we've partnered with in the past, I'd be interested in seeing that.
We can get that.
And I don't know if we could classify this as a sporting event.
Not quite.
It's too late.
Maybe you do horseshoes out in the alley or something.
Yes, it's too late for this year anyway.
It's too late for that, for this year, anyway. But it's a good idea.
Because there's state revenue for sporting events, so. Film festival and horseshoe competition, maybe.
Clearly, one of the challenges for the current budget would be finding available funding, so. It may be, I don't know if it'll be more, I was going to say maybe less of a challenge next year, but that probably would not be true, so. Money is always tight, as you.
Well, no, absolutely.
Pardon me?
I said, but at least you'd have a better chance of planning.
Yes, yeah. It would help us plan a lot better. I agree.
Oh, yeah, and by the way, we're also, Produce Iowa has also said that they would give us twenty-five hundred dollars towards our budget if we could also get the city of Sioux City to at least match that. But I think it should be much more than that, again, a real partnership in many ways.
I would like to see that happen.
Yeah, so would I. I think what we need is probably a written proposal so we can go over it, and then we can discuss it, so.
I can get you some budget numbers. That would be good.
And we could also maybe sit down and help you find some other sponsors.
Oh, that would be greatly appreciated.
Helpful, so.
Yeah, Rick, if you'd send a formal request, just send it to me in the city manager's office, we'll get an address.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm excited, I think it'd be great, so.
Appreciate your time.
Yep.
Thanks, Rick, Dan.
Anyone else be heard? Seeing none, council concerns?
I just wanted to mention quickly, I wanted to thank everyone who was instrumental in making arrangements for the visiting delegation from Yamanashi City. Certainly a special thanks to Angel, I don't see her here, I know that she was very active, all of the host families. Mayor Scott, President John Reinders from Morningside College hosted a reception for them as well, and the Yamanashi City Advisory Board, and all who were involved. I know it took a large number of people, but I thought it was really a successful trip for, I know that the the Japanese delegation would tell you that it was really a great trip. And, oh, and also the administrative assistant to the city manager's office, Sandy Blavatia, who's now too, and I'd be remiss if I forgot to mention her, but I know there are people, the danger of mentioning names is you'll forget somebody, but it really was a very nice, I think, five-day event. And I think they had a great time, and the dinner Saturday evening at the Convention Center was terrific as well with the adults and about Yamanashi City, so. Thank you to everybody that was involved, it really was a successful event for both sides.
I'm just going to add to that, and then I'll pass it on to you there, Dan, but I know that the host folks took their person out, and they showed them a really good time. I know that they, I think as a group, they went to the Mobile Fair, they'd never been to a fair before, well, I can imagine, they're from Japan. So they got to see how agriculture was, and they got to try some different foods that was real interesting to them, so. I know that they made a lot of memories, they got a lot of pictures, they're going to remember Sioux City real well, so. We want to thank them for coming also, so. We learned a lot from them, and I know they learned a lot from us, so it was a good thing.
Let's hope they still continue to eat pork in Japan after seeing how cute those hogs are at the fair.
Well, they ate them Saturday night. I think, I think it's okay. Pork chops. Yep, I'm good.
We have a reception for the Iowa Transportation Commission from 5:30 to 6:30 this evening. I will only be able to be there for about twenty minutes, and then I have to bid another commitment at six o'clock, but I'll try to make it at 5:30 for that, that's all I have.
Let's see, so we talked a little while back about a bike trail idea, mountain bike trail audit. Do you want to work on setting up a meeting with, like, Jay or Cy Chesterman? I would mind being involved if we could start looking at different locations, too.
Absolutely, I was planning on talking to Jay about a different bike trail project anyway, so we can just talk about both at the same time, that'd be great.
A couple of concerns that were brought up by a couple of guys I've met from Irtun that had been out to Bacon Creek. There's a couple areas where there's some barbed wire fence, I think one of the areas, it's mostly, I think it's maybe a city-owned fence, but the other area, it's a privately-owned fence. Maybe working to see if we can get like a cattle rail out there instead of a barbed wire in that spot, because it is close by and is a liability issue, I think just, that might be a little safer for us.
Okay. All good.
Community development, Jeff, I wanted to thank your department on the proactive nature in selling off the city-owned useless parcels. I've seen a few of the letters from people asking me if they're legitimate letters, and I think it's a great deal to get a lot of these gone, and I applaud your department for being aggressive in that, so thank you. That's it.
It was so long ago, and most of you forgot, but it was a great neighborhood network night out. I think our neighborhood networks did an outstanding job, other than my grandson getting stung at the first one. The firemen came to his rescue with an ice bag, and that helped, so. And Pete, I don't want to leave anybody out either, but, you know, the one group that I think had a presence and certainly keeps that going is the our own Yamanashi City Committee, which they need to be thanked for their work, too, because they were out and about working with the group. And people ask, how did we develop that partnership with Terry Branstad, because we had a connection to Yamanashi City? And for those of you that forgot, it was the Great Iowa Pig Lift, they were struck by a typhoon back in the sixties, I think, and Iowa hog lived at fifty, I think I told you guys the other night, fifty hogs over to Yamanashi City, so the pigs in the Yamanashi Prefecta, which is actually their state, like Iowa, all have Iowa backgrounds to them now, so if you want some interesting reading, you might Google that and determine. And because of that relationship, Terry Branstad, the state of Yamanashi developed a state partnership, and that's how we have city partnerships with them now, so. Lastly, I've driven that bridge over the Big Sioux into North Sioux, because that bridge is a train wreck. And I know it's a joint jurisdiction with the state of South Dakota, and I know it'll be difficult to get anything done, and once upon a time, I sat on the Hamilton Bridge, which people said that we never do, we put an asphalt over the top of it, at least it made it a little rougher.
You're talking the military road one, right?
Yes. We need to see if North Sioux or the state of Iowa and the state of South Dakota would let us, and North Sioux could help participate in it, and maybe put a little overlay on that quickly with the bids you just got, but.
I thought that was in our CIP.
I think it's on the list.
It is, but the problem is, I think South Dakota doesn't have the money. Is that right?
It is.
The last I checked, they don't.
Yeah, we're working with them, they're actually doing some research, we're waiting to hear back from them to try to figure out an agreement to the cost sharing on that. But it is in the works, and it is funded already, or we've got an agreement with the DOT, the Iowa DOT to fund that.
Yeah, but we're not doing any good if South Dakota doesn't participate.
Right, yeah, we're looking for the additional funding there as well.
And the bridge gets inspected on an annual basis, does it not?
I wonder, every two years.
Every two years?
Yeah.
It's not about safety, it's about a horrible ride. The potholes are unbelievable.
The deck's falling apart, yeah, a lot of potholes on there.
Yeah, and it's going to get, we're salt all winter, and it's only going to get worse, it's not, so I'm just thinking as a preventive deal, if we could throw an inch overlay on that, like we did Hamilton to save that bridge. Remember when you told me it wasn't too good an idea, but we did it and it worked really well? Maybe it was before you. Maybe it wasn't you, maybe it was somebody else, but certainly there was an engineer that told me how stupid I was on that deal, but anyway.
I got one more thing.
Okay.
I just thought of it. And I believe I talked to Mr. Padmore about it, about the stop sign where Dish is.
Yeah.
I don't want to forget that. Okay. And also, the Mayor's Youth Commission went with Yamanashi Kids out to the Explorers game.
You're right.
And I want to acknowledge the Mayor's Youth Commission, they were really involved with the kids, so.
Oh, and I do want one other thing, Bob. Dr. Reinders from Morningside College asked if we would like to, not like we did the last time, but at least something nice, figure out something for police and fire in the area for the Morningside Briar Cliff football game again this year. So would you have somebody work with them to see what we could possibly do? I don't think we want to necessarily do what we did the last time, but maybe figure out a way to.
It was fun, the tailgate thing.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah. Do you know the date this year?
No, I don't. He just mentioned it the other night, and I haven't even had a chance to look at a calendar, but if we're going to do it, we're going to have to get on it pretty quick. Maybe we don't do a tent or anything, maybe we just have somebody cook and that's, you know, see what we can get donated and that. Anyway, that's that. Anything else?
No, related to that, it'll be going out, I think the press release went out, the Explorers are having a public safety appreciation night, or afternoon. I believe it's a week from Saturday, but there'll be a press release going out about that.
Good to have you back. Anything from you today?
Not today, mayor.
Okay, I'm going to move adjourned then.
Scott.
Hi.
Capron.
Hi.
Brettkin.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
Reddick.
Hi.